Good morning, everybody. It is Tuesday, October twenty first, two thousand twenty five. My name is Don Swanker. I will call the Jackson County Board of Supervisors meeting to order. To my left, I have Mike Stein. Morning. To my right, I have Nan Flagel.
Good morning.
We have Bjorn from I T. We have Lisa from the Auditor's Office. Luann in the back with our executive assistant. We have Brittany from the press.
Welcome back.
Welcome. And first up is visitors and citizens. Is there anybody here or online that would like to address the board today for anything? Hearing your saying none, first up, we have Sam Christiansen with the Labor Specialist to do the initial proposal for the Sheriff's Office Collective Bargaining again.
Morning.
Morning.
Good morning, Commissioner. I'm Sam Christiansen. I'm a Labor Specialist with the Internal or Police Labor Service Division. And I'm working with the Jackson County Deputy Sheriff's Bargaining Unit. And we have a deputy here to present the initial proposal on the contract. And I look forward to working with Becky and and your team to get a contract signed.
So John, we are in receipt of the initial proposal. Is there anything specific you want to highlight or just have us receive it? And we'll talk about it here in a week or two when we respond.
Sam, can you hear us?
Yes, I hear you. I don't I don't have anything to add. If you have something to ask me or whatever, I.
All right, then we've accepted it and we will respond in the next couple of weeks.
Thank you very much. You guys have a good day.
Thank you very much.
Bye.
Wow. Next up, we have Jayden Shuffington County Engineer.
Morning. Good morning. I have two entrance permits, the agenda today. The first one is for Dennis Hankamire. It is on hundred and eighty fourth and Street in the Perry Township of Section Three. It meets, it's an existing driveway. He's looking to get it addressed and change existing address to this one. So the entrance is existing, but it meets all the sufficient site distance, got five hundred feet approaching from both sides. It's at High Point District, so it does not need a culvert. And there was initial question of this one, whether or not it was actually on his property. With help from Beck in the zoning's office, Janelle in the assessors, and Lisa in the auditor's office, we were able to determine that it actually is on his property. Based on a platter survey, it actually has warranty description, so everything is good as far as our department.
Motion to approve.
No, one second. Got a motion by Nan, second by Mike, to approve Dennis Hankamire's request for residential entrance on Perry Township, Section Three, Hundred and Eighty Fourth Street. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Oppose? Motion carries.
Last is a entrance permit for Mitchell Redman on Twenty First Twenty First Street in the Butler Township of Section.
Twenty nine?
Twenty nine. Thank you.
Twenty First Avenue?
Twenty First Avenue. Nice. Thank you. I had that broke down incorrectly for his new address, so I will change that. So he has Twenty First Avenue. It does require, no, this one does not require culverts either, and it has sufficient site distance as well, so we recommend approval.
Move to approve.
I second that.
Got a motion by Mike, second by Nan, to approve Mitchell Redman's residential entrance permit in Butler Township's Section Twenty Nine on Twenty First Avenue. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye? Aye. Oppose? Motion carries.
So I just wanted to quick bring up, I guess, for entrance permits, when they meet our policy, which has already been, you know, approved by you as the board. I guess it kind of, it feels redundant to bring entrance permits for, our policy states that, but it feels redundant to bring these forward when they already meet the approved policy. I guess I just wanted to get all of your thoughts on if we change the policy, thoughts on changing the policy that as long as any proposed entrances meet our policy that, do they not need to have board approval since the board's already approved our entrance permit policy?
Well, I guess one question I have on your on your entrance policy, I know we had talked about having the number of entrances or whatever. Is that been, I know there was needing to be a change for that. Did that get addressed?
So at that time, we decided not to, or decided to not limit how many driveways are within, like, say, a forty acre parcel. The only thing I would like to add in there is a minimum distance away from an intersection, like a hundred, and an adjacent driveway, like. I would, I feel like from an intersection, a driveway should be no closer than a hundred and fifty foot away. And from an adjacent driveway, so if you have the road here and driveway here, the next driveway should be a minimum of seventy-five feet away, just to allow by time they have culverts and fill sections. Then the bank and slopes, you wouldn't want it, the two bank and slopes touching, I guess, even some space in between. So I would at least like to have that change made.
We also talked at one time about a maximum driveway width.
Width or slope probably.
Width.
Width. So that's already stated in our, we go up to fifty feet unless they give us written justification on, they can go up, up to fifty with no questions asked. It can go up from fifty to seventy with written justification of, like, say, it's a green bin site, they're going to have multiple semis or cattle operation, what have you. To go up to seventy feet. So those widths are already set in there based on our permit.
So Jayden, I guess, we talked about this before. I think it's pretty minimal for us to say approve or not approve, but, I mean, I think once in a while we do have questions as far as, like you just said, traffic, semi-traffic, or what are they, or what is going to entail in the future, or what, you know, how it relates to the rest of the topography or area, I suppose. I don't know. I think it's pretty simple to do this, what we just did, and if we had questions, because we get this beforehand through your agenda. So if we have questions, I would think they would come arise. I don't know. I guess I'd like to know.
Well, I mean, it's really up to you three. It's just a point, like, that just means they seem redundant, like, they're already, they meet our policy, bring it forward. It's up to you three. It was just a point of discussion. It's really up to you three, like, willing to do whatever.
I think it's a good idea to keep it kind of how we're doing it.
Fair enough. The only, the only other time I see permits is in the scoop. Who's ordered a permit last month or last? Otherwise, I wouldn't know. And then I looked at some of them and I'm going, geez, I forgot that one. Did we approve that?
It was just a disguise.
All right. How do you think the demonstration project went last Thursday?
Good. I was.
If everybody buys equipment, do we get a percentage like?
They basically told me no. But I was surprised there was that many counties. I mean, I extended the invite to a lot of counties, but there was actually ninety-some. There's only one county that did not show up, so I was quite surprised, honestly. And they were all seemed very happy and they were taking videos and taking it back to their powers that be, I guess.
Any public comments on it, or anybody hear anything? I know.
Nan posted a video.
I did post a video. And the only comment on that was, you know, if you're going to be doing that, I hope you're spraying with it, obviously, as we're going to try to do as much as we can and.
Funds.
Right. Funds allow. I mean, hopefully, we get a lot more cut down than what our funds allow us to spend, so that we can get these at least cleaned up. And we have the equipment. If we have to go back over it in a, you know, few years, that it wouldn't be such a big project, so.
No, I think it was, it was very successful, so. Good job. Keep it up.
Thanks, Jayden.
Yep. Thank you much. Next up, we have Sally Hoy from the Auditor's Office to talk about the Drug Free Communities Grant Coordinator Contract. We have Dawn here as well.
Why not?
You're morning, aren't you?
Not bad.
So we made a few tweaks from last week. We corrected the amount, the total amount in the contract. So we, we, the breakdown of the salary and the insurance did not match what the total above on the second page was. So I corrected the total amount to match what is in the D F C grant budget of its salary, so that matches. I took out the office space and internet costs, anything to do with the actual office costs. Because we will be doing a separate contract with, or lease agreement with T W V for office space for Dawn. For the D F C grant, I should think. I think that's the only changes that we made.
You good with the notes?
Yes, I am. I just wanted to give one clarification on knowing it says that for reimbursements, expenses, the, within the forty-five days, with all this government shutdown, but for the salary and health insurance, when that gets submitted in, that there's that account. That is it, that, does that get paid right away, or does that have to sit and wait for the forty-five days?
We will be submitting the claim, we are paying claims this week for payment on this Friday, so we will be submitting a claim for the first, from September thirtieth. For the first two months, ba- basically, in the next claim period, I believe it's November seventh, that Friday. Okay, so two weeks from this Friday.
So two weeks from today on the fourth, we will be approving the claim and it will be paid on November seventh.
So it comes on to that, not have to wait for the reimbursement and all that sort of thing. I just needed to be clarified that we weren't hanging out waiting for that, for that part of it. I get the extent.
Ideally, we would, but I, I believe that the scuttlebutt, it so far has been that they are not going to, not approve. They are going to approve that, but there's always the chance. I mean, it's the federal government, so.
Any other questions?
So moving forward, it gets paid every two weeks also?
Yes.
No, I, I didn't, I mean, other than you, the changes you indicated, I didn't see any issues other than you took out the rent and whatnot, so yeah. That's cool. I'm good with it. Do you need to approve anything of that?
Yes.
I would make that motion to approve the D F C grant coordinator contract as presented.
I would second that.
Got a motion by Mike, second by Nan, to approve the D F C grant coordinator contract with Don Nelson as presented. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye? Aye. Oppose? Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
You bet. Have a good.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Now, I do know that we, we talked last night together, we build, we're trying to get the contract together, formulate the lease. I don't think it'll be an issue to get in there and start. We can talk to Amber and all that stuff to get things situated, but we should get that lease situated and we'll be good from there.
Okay. I was going to run over there after this.
Yep, and she did say she's working on the telephone. It's a touch base with her now that it's official, but yeah.
Meet her.
You're good to go.
They'll have to go through you.
Yeah. Get a key for the office.
The key for the office, the front door in the office would have to go through the auditor.
So you will get a, you, she will issue you a key that will get you in the front door and your door.
From over there?
Yes.
Okay.
So, all right.
All right. Thank you.
You bet. Have a great day.
And do you know, like, how often you will come and update us, or?
It's required quarterly, but I'm happy to do it more often if you'd like.
Well, get your.
Get started, yeah. I mean, get your feet in the door and get wet and, and see what, if there's something of interest that you'd like to bring forward, yeah, we'd be happy to hear it.
Yeah. Cool. Thank you much.
Okay.
Next up on the agenda is Lisa Smith from the auditor.
Morning. We've got one copy or two. Okay, thank you. This morning, I need a motion to approve the amendments of the October fourteenth, twenty twenty five Board Proceedings and Work Session as written by Auditor Smith and authorized publication in the official newspapers.
Hold on a second. Hey, Dawn, did Dawn sign that contract too? Not being since she's here? Shelley, I don't know. She wants, do you want her to sign that, or did she?
I don't know her. There's two copies for you and Lisa and Don's son.
Yeah, so anyway, didn't mean to interrupt. Go. Now we're back to, is there a motion for the board proceeding?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Got a motion by Nan, second by Mike, to approve the amendments of the October fourteenth, twenty twenty five Board Proceedings and Work Session as written by Auditor Smith and authorized publication in the official newspapers. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Need a motion to approve and authorize the Auditor's Office to issue warrants in the publication of the claims listing in the amount of four hundred and ninety-three thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars and eighty-nine cents.
I'll move.
I'll second that.
Got a motion by Mike, second by Nan, to approve and authorize the Auditor's Office to issue warrants in the publication of the claims listing in the amount of four hundred and ninety-three thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars and eighty-nine cents. Any other discussion? And just know that there was a seventy thousand dollar, roughly seventy thousand dollar payment to Macoke at the destination Iowa, Prairie Creek Park, and there was roughly about a hundred and sixty or so thousand in Rock and things like that, so that's a bulk of what that was. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Need a motion to accept and place on file the Veterans Affairs Meeting Minutes from the August thirteenth, twenty twenty five meeting.
I'll make that motion.
I would second.
Got a motion by Nan, second by Mike, to accept and place on file the Veterans Affairs Commission Meeting Minutes for August thirteenth, twenty twenty five meeting. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
So last Thursday, I did receive this letter as of resignation, so I will read it to you. Dear Board Supervisors, please accept this letter as a formal notification of my retirement from my position as the Jackson County Recorder. My last day will be December thirty first, twenty twenty five. I've enjoyed working with you and all the courthouse staff during my thirty years of employment. I am also very grateful for the trust and support the citizens of Jackson County have placed in me over the years. It has been an honor to serve the people of Jackson County. I will miss the many friends I have made, both locally and throughout the state, but I am looking forward to what the future brings. Thank you. Arlene Schop, Jackson County Recorder.
I would mention motion reluctantly to accept the resignation letter and thank Arlene for her services.
I would second all of that.
Got a motion by Mike, second by Nan, to accept and place on file the resignation letter for the Jackson County Recorder, Arlene Schop, effective thirty-one December, twenty twenty five, with regret and appreciation for time and everything she's done here. Any other discussion? I guess one question I would have at this point is, should we, when we talked to Becky about setting up, or the procedures, timelines for what we need to do to fill the position?
You have to, I will code, you have to.
Either appoint or?
Have to have your intention known. You also have to get a notification done in the newspaper, so you have to decide what your intentions are. As far as if you're going to call for a special election, or if you're going to appoint, then you need to make sure that you have proper notice done in the official newspapers in Jackson County. And then make that decision, have it posted in the newspaper. That day comes, you do whatever your intentions are, and then the citizens of Jackson County also have time to petition for a special election after that.
If we decide to appoint, they can petition for a special election. Now, I guess, we have, if I remember, we have, like, is it forty-one days to make it, to make a decision? If I'm not mistaken, and so we just need to look as far as, with her having the letter, resignation letter, can we go ahead and start the process now, and we have to incur the vacancy?
No, you can start the process now. You can get the clock ticking to get the notification done and to make your decision if you're going to special election or appoint.
Okay. I guess we should put that maybe on next week's agenda to make the official decision and get our.
Becky probably has already started that process, could have a conversation with, with, and see what our options are.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
The other thing that I would like to bring before the board today is, is my understanding based on, based on budget time that you have desired to make a payment to Together We Build. I included in today, I wanted you to know that there was an agreement that was done, was signed on August thirteenth, twenty twenty four, that allowed us to make the twenty-five thousand dollar payment to Together We Build. That agreement expired June thirtieth, twenty twenty five. So before, is it your intention still to make that twenty-five thousand dollar payment, and if so, that another agreement would need to be signed? So this one has expired, and I don't have the authority to make that payment.
Didn't, didn't we pledge twenty-five a year for?
So I'm, I'm just saying, this is the agreement that we've had a year ago. Are you going to do another agreement?
I thought we had that agreement like Dawn said for three years. Has that been three years?
This one only says, so this agreement on number four says this agreement is effective August thirteenth, twenty twenty four, and will expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty five. I believe you're thinking about the lease to the building.
No, I'm thinking.
I thought you pledged another hundred thousand dollars.
The agreement says that this is expired.
Okay, so again, was there an original agreement besides that one? We may have proved that twenty-five for that year, but the original agreement said we committed for three years. And I don't know how long that.
I thought, I thought there was a, way back when you guys approved a hundred thousand over four years.
That's correct.
And then I thought we did another hundred thousand over four, twenty-five year for four years.
So what was the point of this?
I have no.
No idea.
Who wrote that?
Mike signed it.
I didn't write it. I'll guarantee.
Brought before the board.
Right.
Mike signed it. Will Cardalia signed it.
Okay, so I guess.
I think this was for the second agreement.
Yeah.
I think this was actually the first. This was the first payment.
The second.
Of the second time that you agreed to pay.
Right.
That's the question.
So it, do we have to do that yearly? Yes.
Because I would say probably we do have to do it yearly, because yes, we're pledging it, but if something would come up in the budget or whatever, you know, you would have to look at, so. I would say this needs to be rewrote so that we can get the payment.
Well, whatever we need to do.
Because we planned on it in the budget for this budget period.
Just need to have this agreement rewritten, yes.
Yeah.
Do you want it for a year?
Agreed to our original.
Let's do the, let's do, just do three year, twenty-five a year for three years.
Okay.
And that we.
And that was our ending date with last is three years. Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know exactly. Time flies.
That's all that I have for the board today.
So there was no action on that? That was just a question.
I just needed to know what you wanted me to do.
All right. We appreciate it. Luann. Yep, forward.
Good morning.
Good morning. Calendar for this week. Today has a lot going on. Yesterday had a lot going on, but we'll start with today. At ten o'clock, there is a R P A meeting by Zoom only for Don and Nan. And at ten thirty, we have scheduled a strategy session for collective bargaining. With the representatives of the Jackson County Sheriff's Office Collective Bargaining Unit. That is not a public meeting. That is just an internal meeting. Four P M is a virtual Aging and Disability Town Hall meeting by Zoom for any of you. And at five o'clock is a Conservation Board meeting in Hurstville for any of you. Tomorrow, Wednesday, October twenty-second, at seven P M, is a Jackson County E M S Association meeting at Andrew for any of you. Thursday, October twenty-third, at five-thirty, is a Hay Cat meeting by Zoom for Mike. On Monday, October twenty-seventh, at four P M, is an Early Childhood Iowa Council meeting in Dewitt or by Zoom for Nan. And at seven P M that night is a Board of Adjustment meeting in the committee room or by Zoom for any of you. Our next regular meeting will be on Tuesday, October twenty-eighth, nine A M at the usual time. And that afternoon at five P M is a Macoke and the River Watershed Management Authority Annual Meeting in Monticello, for any of you that want to go to that. The other business I have today is county farm business. I do have copies of the financial verification authorization that Don needs to sign, so I have that ready to hand out. Also, a letter to the F S A releasing, authorizing them to release information on the cropland and base yield information for program payments and farm apps for that particular farm, for the bidders if they don't want that information. The other thing is to finalize the terms of the lease, other than the dollar amount, which we won't know until we open bids. So I'm looking to get the, the terms of that approved today. And then we'll do a final lease and sign it when we have the dollar amount for the lease, and that won't be until the eighteenth of November.
So do you need approval with amendments as far as prices and typing maybe error on the last page?
To type the error on the last page, we won't put the dollar amount in because we don't know that yet.
Correct.
Is there any amendments or any changes in there as far as hunting on the land or anything like that? Do you make any of those changes to this lease? And I haven't read through what John.
They haven't been made by now.
Now, I would make a motion to approve the lease agreement as presented with the amendments listed.
Did we put, sorry, anything in there? We had talked about that notification of termination of this lease will go to the signer of the lease only. So that we don't have to send out twelve notifications again to all the subleases that should be the main persons, John, to notify the services.
I know we negotiated that with Brian and.
I thought, yeah, the last email I seen from John was that to the original contract, signee was sufficient. So.
Because we had this time. So that's, that's what we want to do with it, so.
And do we have anything that it's their responsibility to keep us advised of their current address? That would be my concerns. I mean, would be the only thing.
I, I just, we need to. There are minimal changes. I think we need to move forward. We've been looking at this thing for a month, and we, we've had the opportunity to make changes if we needed to, and I, and we all expressed our concerns, and I think, I think it's legit.
You moved, you have got a motion to approve as amended discussion with removal of the, the, the amount and the name changes in the back. Is there a second? Got a motion by Mike, second by Nan, to approve the revisions of the farm lease as discussed. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
So that just sets the lease, what they can look at, and it's basically the, the last news that just removes the terms and things, which for the presses, discussion, this doesn't approve a farm lease goal. It's just, this is what they can request to see.
These are the terms, so that the bidders can see what the terms of the lease are, I guess. Right.
Any other, any other business?
We had a D C A T meeting yesterday, and everything is running fairly smooth and not a lot of changes. I, you did send out, they announced a domestic abuse class that's coming up, or a day coming up on November sixth or September, maybe. So I thought it was interesting, maybe even for law enforcement or public health or whoever may be concerned, so I had Luann send that out to everyone. We had a waste attorney meeting yesterday, and slowly moving forward, the building, with the recycle building has been revamped as far as cement, cement piers that they can bump up against and some plywood walls and such. They're still waiting for to have the doors on the trailers revamped and welded the doors on so they swing open. So in that building, there is a dock area, but you have to load it with the skid loader, so it's going to have to be backed up to the dock and have to drive into the trailer and pack it and load it. So it's going to be minimal, you know, I mean, again, it's going to be. You know, I mean, again, it's gonna be for pickups and cars and small trailers, um, we don't think we can efficiently dump, dump trailers and anything longer than three feet, because you're gonna have to put it in a skid loader bucket. Drive it, physically drive it into the trailers.
Any idea when construction starts on the new?
Um, not before January. And hopefully, we got the D N R permits to operate on a temporary basis, and they specifically say that we can't take commercial clients, if you will, or something, I mean, I know local contractors are asking, and again, they're gonna have to, uh, talk to Frank, I guess, in the waste authority and see what they can really, the door is really minimal to get in there to back a dump trailer in, if you will, um, they get a little longer and bigger every day too, but to get them in there, I mean, any good operator could probably get in there and dump it, but it's pretty minimal space in there to move around it. Yeah, so, we'll do the best we can, that's all I can say. And we, you know, at least we're, we're opening up on a temporary basis.
Um, I attended the senior citizen board meeting down at their building, um, last week and last month's numbers, as far as events and attendance were way up, like five hundred and so, so. They're getting a lot of activities going on there that people are attending and coming to, and got a few quote clubs and card clubs are going on, so they do have a website and Facebook page, so. The public's interested in things that are going on down there, they're working on getting a revolving calendar that has all of their stuff, but they also have calendars posted down there that you can stop in and pick up on what's going on for the month, so if you haven't looked at them for a while, I would recommend doing that.
Well, that's it, I just got two, uh, Limestone Bluffs and Macocata River Water Management Authority that we met last week, and biggest um, part of each of the meetings was how much government shutdown to shut the grant processes down. And so they're in somewhat limited capacity, or things are on hold for grants that were in, in, uh, in the works, um, they're still, Macocata River Management Authority. Um, they still got pretty good, uh, cover crop grant that they have going through. Last year they had twelve participants, I think we're up to twenty-eight this year, so that's, that's in the works, that's been funded, so that's going through so far. From what we understand, other than that, those two are going pretty good. Together We Build met last night, and they approved or agreed to, and are excited about the Drug Free Communities person coming in and running that office space, that helps out a lot, so they're looking forward to they're checking to get a phone in there, they're, the internet's already in there, and so they approved that from what they could, they were excited about it, so. That's all I got. Anything else for the good of the meeting?
If there's no further business, I make the motion to adjourn.
I will second that.
Got a motion by Mike, second by Nin, Nin to adjourn, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Motion carries, have a great day, everybody.